Of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer-Horsham District Board here expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. You could please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mr. Riker, could you please do roll call?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
Dave Brown.
Here.
One second, okay.
Eric Coombs. Tara Connor-Halston.
Here.
Teresa Brown. Susan Hunziger-Hoff.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
I'm here.
Marian McCouch.
Here.
Jim Greenhall.
Here.
Thank you.
And we do have a executive session scheduled for after this meeting. We are going to start tonight with a presentation from the Business Office on the Budget Presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight's Budget Presentation is the third in a series of Budget Presentations by the Administration in the Development of the 2122 Fiscal Year Budget, which will culminate in the final adoption in June 2021. This presentation will help to provide some additional information on our continued review and progress in the Budget Development Process this year. This slide represents where we were in the last presentation, which was January 19th. And the first line is the Expenditure Shortfall. The increase from the 2021 budget to where we were sitting on January 19th was an increase in expenditures of a little over 3.7 million. We had an increase in revenue of 767,000 from the 2021 budget, which the net of those two figures left a shortfall before any tax increase of a little over 2.9 million. If you factor in the full Act One Index allowance of 3% that is approved by the state this year, that would give us an additional revenue of 2.2 million, leaving a, still leaving a shortfall of a little over $700,000. The slide that is up now is where we are sitting as of tonight. So we've had a reduction from where we were in January down to an expenditure shortfall from the 2021 of a little over 2.7 million. The revenue increases a little bit down from where we were sitting in January, down to $656,000 increase. The net is $2,055,000. If you factor in again, the full 3% increase of giving us a little over 2.2, we are actually sitting in a surplus of $191,000. So for tonight's presentation, we are showing an actual increase of 2.74, which is a little under the full Act One Index of 3%. This slide is a summary of where we are comparing the January and April 19th presentations. We were sitting at 116 million in the expenditure budget. We are now at 115 million, and that is that difference of a little over a million decrease in expenses. And the revenue budget, again, a little bit of a decrease of a hundred, little over 100,000. The net of a $927,000 decrease. Just to clarify where some of those expenditure decreases that we were able to achieve, this is a list of some of the areas that we were focusing on since the January 19th meeting. And the revenue decrease is a result of some settled assessment appeals, real estate assessment appeals that resulted in that drop of a little over 100,000. And I'm going to pass off this presentation to Dr. Everslag to continue with the presentation on Staffing Objectives.
Thank you, Ms. Kari. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Because staffing and personnel make up such a high proportion of the budget, I'm going to just talk briefly about some of our staffing objectives as we're entering in the midst of the time of the year when we're looking at our staffing and programming needs for next year. So some of our objectives are to, of course, develop a budget at or below the Act One Index. We are there now and looking to work our way down to even a reduced budget in a way that can still meet these objectives. We, of course, want to maintain our quality educational programs. We're not seeking to cut any programs from the course of study K through 12 and want to continue to offer a robust offering of course of study for our high school students who have that level of choice. We're required to meet all federal, state, and local regulations and requirements regarding staffing. So, for example, if there's special education programming, programming for English language learners and so forth, we have to make sure we have staffing ratios to meet the needs of those students. And we adjust and expand programming when appropriate in that area. A comprehensive plan goals drive all that we do in the district. And we want our staff to be able to be appropriately moving us in a direction towards attaining those goals. We want to plan for projected and future requirements. We will learn of upcoming state requirements and make sure that we are planning and programming accordingly for those. Happer-Horsham has maintained class sizes below our caps. And that is something that we should feel proud of, that we've been able to maintain class sizes that allow for effective learning environments. And that's something that we have valued and want to maintain valuing in the future and will staff accordingly. And we, of course, want to allocate resources and staff to achieve our objectives overall as a district, both through requirements and with our programming needs. And through that minimize the need for any demotions or furloughs. We look at positions through attrition or reassignment if necessary. Try to meet those objectives in a way that is efficient. Some current issues that are impacting staffing. We, like many districts, are experiencing some unique and atypical enrollment shifts. Just difficult with some, to predict some of the enrollments with students from private schools to public schools, charter and back and forth. And then we do in dealing with that on top of the broader enrollment and demographic shifts that the district has been experiencing over the last several years. Obviously, we have to be responsive to the enrollment needs. I think we're in a good position with this, but it is something that we monitor closely. Another major issue that impacts staffing is meeting the diverse needs of students. Special education programming can dictate staffing. And that's something we should feel good about when families come into the district and have needs. We want to be a district and community that welcomes and supports those students and provides the needs to help them be successful. We're always assessing our schools' school safety and security protocols and ensuring we have staffing accordingly with those. We have some newer buildings that have some safety and security systems in place, but we also look at that from a personnel lens. We want to continue programming for high school choice. And so the high school goes through the process of getting course requests from students. And we have been able to meet those requests at a very high percentage. In fact, I was very impressed by the information I got from the high school, Mr. Williams, Mr. Zuck and his team, and how they're scheduling the high school with a, close to 98% of student choices are being able to be met through the schedule, which is a very high number for high school. That's something we should feel good about. And at this time of the year, an issue that always impacts staff and is retirements and retention. We get additional information about retirees and some individuals who may be seeking employment elsewhere. And so those decisions impact our staffing as well. So some action steps that we're taking that are similar to the information that we just shared. We're analyzing enrollment and student needs on an ongoing basis, looking at our instructional program and safety needs, reflecting on our transition planning that's been supported through the reconfiguration. So we did some good work in the district this past year to make sure that students are configured in their, in their local catchment areas at the elementary level. And I think that was excellent, excellent work that we continue to monitor that. We're billing student schedules based on needs and requests. That's ongoing and student, student needs should drive, should drive the schedule. And that will continue to be a spring action item. We'll configure our staff strategically to meet those demands, analyze our special education needs, continue with the PD budget process that Karen outlined and the Business Office is working through. And we, whenever there is a staff vacancy, you know, assess organizational needs and assess how that vacancy would be best built in order to meet those, the organizational needs. And we go through transfer requests that may be through staff requests to try to be placed in another role professionally that might help us meet those needs. And with that, we'll gather this information and prepare recommendations to the board that will impact the budget and where we are in relationship to the Act One Index. And we have future meetings, as you know, only four business meetings or four meetings that will gather together in this fiscal year, two of which will be presenting a budget adoption at May 17th, the preliminary budget. And then the June 21st will be the final budget adoption that we will present to the board. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Everslag. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the budget, board members? Now, we're going to move on to the public comment section. So this is the time for any members of the public wishing to make a comment on agenda items only. If you wish to make a comment, you can raise your hand by using the raise hand feature in Zoom or by pressing star nine on your phone. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And we ask that you state your name and your address prior to starting your comment. Do we have any members wishing to make a comment?
Yes, we do, Madam President. Let me share the screen. That around, give me one second. Okay. Okay, first we have Michelle Warren. Michelle, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hello, good evening. My name is Michelle Warren and I live at 112 Hunt Drive in Horsham. And I'm speaking in support of the turf fields at the high school. My son was a lacrosse player for four years for the boys team. He graduated in 2019. Back then, it would have been helpful for him to have some turf fields when the, you know, backfields were wet and they had crazy practice times and, you know, difficult to, for scheduling purposes for the team. And my daughter is now in ninth grade and she plays soccer and lacrosse. So would be helpful for both of those teams to use the turf fields. And she would get, you know, more use out of them. And I think that it would help our district to become more competitive with other districts, surrounding districts that have more than one turf field, such as Upper Dublin. They have their Spark Field, Springfield just built a bunch of turf fields there. And I'm just hoping that everybody votes for the turf fields. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Warren.
Hey, thank you. Okay, at this time, those are the only hands I see raised for a comment.
Okay. Okay, so we are looking for approval of the minutes for the March 15th Legislative Action Meeting and the April 6th Work Session Committee Meeting.
This is DJ Schultz, and I so moved.
Teresa Brown, second.
Any comments or discussions around the minutes? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so now we're moving on to consent agenda items. Item A, bills for approval. B, budget transfer and adjustments. C, capital project report. D, childcare program report. E, food service report. F, payroll report. G, student activities report. H, student scholarship memorial report. I, tax collectors report. And J, treasurer's financial reports. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda items?
David Brown, so moved.
Teresa Brown, second.
Any comments or discussions around those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Human Resources Action Items. A, administrative staff. B, certified staff. C, extracurricular staff. And D, support staff. Is there a motion to approve those items?
David Brown, so moved.
Susan Hunzinger-Hoff, second.
Any comments or discussion around those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special Services Action Items, A and B.
This is DJ Schultz, so moved.
It's David Brown, all second.
Any comment or discussion around those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam President, excuse me, I apologize for the interruption. On the, yep, on the, under human resources action item, pleased to share that the board approved Mr. William Stone to the district as our new Director of Business Affairs. We are pleased that, to welcome Bill to the district. He comes to us from Council Rock School District and has also served as the business manager in both Council Rock and in Sauterton. And he's an experienced business manager who emerged as an excellent candidate through our comprehensive hiring process. So we welcome Mr. Stone to the district. And he is here this evening and we just wanted to invite him to say a brief couple of words.
Thank you, Dr. Everslag, and good evening, board members, now colleagues and Happer-Horsham community. Let me begin by congratulating Bob Riker on his retirement. I certainly have big shoes to fill. And I'm excited to carry on his standard of excellence that he's brought to the district and to the business office. I'm also excited to start developing the relationships that are going to be so critical to success. My philosophy is that budgets are more than just numbers. They're about students and teachers, and they're a pathway to success for our, for our kids. So that's very important to me, and I hope that that philosophy comes through as we begin to work together. I'm really humbled by this opportunity. I thank you for putting your trust in me. And I'm looking forward to becoming a part of the Happer-Horsham community. Thanks very much.
Welcome, Mr. Stone.
Yes, welcome.
Excited to have you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Business Office Items. Item A, approval of the Summer Strings Camp. B, approval of the Revised District School Calendar. C, Revised Health and Safety Plan. D, Tax Assessment Stipulation. E, Network Equipment Replacement. F, Capital Project Approval. G, Capital Project Approval. H, Professional Services Approval. And I, Professional Services Approval. Is there a motion?
It's David Brown. I'll make a motion to approve.
It's DJ Schultz, now second pet.
Is there any discussion around those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so now we move to the Committee Report section. Ms. Hussin, you're half. Do you have a curriculum committee report?
Yes, Madam President, I do. The School District of Happer-Horsham Curriculum Committee met on Tuesday, April 13th via Zoom. Dr. David Weber presented an update on mathematics curriculum review as per the K to 12 Math Report in June of 2020, which contain, which is on the curriculum website. It was determined that the elementary math program needed updated resources in order for the program to be aligned with Common Core standards and assessments. Middle school and high school are not considering new resources at this time. The review of the elementary resources picked up speed in February with 16 people on the Elementary Resource Review Committee, including teachers and instructional leaders, leaders from all levels. Four resources are being considered in math, bridges in math, and vision mathematics, Common Core, and from two different publishers of illustrative math. There will be a recommendation for adoption of one of these math programs proposed at our May 17th meeting with potential approval at the June 7th meeting. We also received an update on district processes to assess student learning. Doctors King and Dr. Weber provided a review of the pandemic impact and concerns. The previous work done on streamlining the core concepts in curriculum maps were created last summer to determine critical content and essential concepts in all of the core content areas delivered throughout the year, virtually and in the classroom, providing a multi-tiered system of supports, including classroom level, small group sessions to bring students to grade level, and intensive work in the individual or in small groups to address readiness concepts. This year, assessments have been more individualized, diagnostic, and formative, occurring in the moment. There have been more performance-based tasks, more student-created projects and presentations of those, quizzes and assessments through Canvas, writing tasks were more frequent, and self-assessment techniques employed. Standardized tests will still happen. Reading and math screeners and diagnostic testing is still being employed through teacher observation and interview-style assessments. Dibble Early Literacies Assessment. Georgia Numeracy Project, a series of diagnostic screeners for elementary number concepts. PSSA and Keystone, and of course, course grades. Preliminary plans for summer strategies were discussed, one of which is expanding Elementary Summer Academy to address student needs in tiers two and three with high-quality tutoring in small groups. CCS COVID support for eligible students with IEPs. And at the secondary level, expanded opportunities are being explored, including tutoring sessions, allowing any students to opt in, and use of software for review and remediation in addition to usual credit recovery options. Then we received an update on social studies review and the cultural proficiency plan goals. Dr. Bates explained that both ELA and social studies began review this year with social studies bumped up to the current year. In a six-year cycle, all disciplines are reviewed. Emphasis is on student achievement, achievement, deeper learning, cultural proficiency, and equity. Professional development is occurring throughout, has occurred throughout February, March, and continues through April. Upcoming sessions will include vision development and finalization in May and social studies professional development. We will be providing an update in early May at our board work session. There were some members of the public present at our meeting. And the comments involved questions about the process for evaluating and moving forward with students who have already caught up or mastered grade-level content this year, those tier-one students. And there were questions about parents being informed and involved with decisions about assessments and assignments. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 11th, 2021, at 3:00 PM. And I look forward to seeing you then. That is it, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Hussinger-Hoff. Facilities Committee Report, Mr. Riker, do you want to handle that?
Can, hey Jen? She said next meeting's February 21st, what did?
No.
Is it May, May 21st? I think probably May, right?
May 11th.
Okay.
Tuesday, May 11th.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam President, Facilities Committee Report. The minutes from our previous meeting are included in board docs for review.
Okay, thank you. And the Finance Committee, do you want to do that one as well?
Sure. Earlier this evening, we had a Finance Committee meeting essentially to walk the Finance Committee and other board members through the 2021-22 General Fund Budget in finer detail. Went through a number of different documents, reviewing those documents. We also talked a little bit about the COVID Grant Relief Funding that we expect to receive, what we've spent so far, what we've received so far. We're going to be providing the community within the board with another update on that at one of our future budget presentations. We also talked some about some of the assessment appeals that we have experienced over the past five years and some of the projected growth in the community that we are projecting going forward over the next five years. And we also had a discussion on an extension. We're piggybacking the state's property tax relief program to provide some of our low-income seniors with some added tax relief next year.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. Mr. Brown, do you have an HR Committee Report?
We do not.
And Ms. Schultz, Policy Committee?
Absolutely, thank you. We did meet earlier this month, and we have some action items to move forward from that meeting. This meeting was on April 7th, I believe. Yes, anyway, you might remember that last action meeting, we approved the first reading of policy 218.3 to align with the recently passed Pennsylvania State Legislation Bill. And it's about students convicted or adjudicated delinquent of sexual assault of another student. And at this time, we'd like to ask for approval for the second reading so we can implement into this, into our policy.
So does someone to make a motion to approve that on a second reading basis?
I, Teresa Brown, make a motion to approve the second reading.
All seconded, Susan Hunzinger-Hoff.
Is there any discussion around that policy? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, Ms. Schultz, you want to go on the second item there?
Absolutely. We have two new policies that we'd like to present tonight for first read approval. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Johnson to help us and explain what those are.
Sure, so we have the two policies on here. They're current policies, however, we provided some updates to each of them. First is policy 605, Tax Levy and District Initiated Appeals. This is essentially conforming with current practice of the district. There were some cases that have been issued by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court over the last few years. So we want to make sure that our policy aligns with law, but our practice has. So that's, that's what's really important. And then the, the second is policy 718, which is Commercial Advertising Partnership and Sponsorships, also a current policy. But I wanted to flesh out a little bit more about non-commercial communications.
non-commercial communication. So there was some information in there, but we wanted to make sure it was really clear that it applied not just to hard copy advertisements, but also digital advertisements for the district.
Thank you. So at this time, we would like to ask for approval of the first read of these two policies.
David Brown, I'll make a motion.
Teresa Brown, I second.
Any discussion around those policies? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, to comment a couple of more things. I wanted to thank Ms. Johnson for explaining that and her hard work, making sure that these are worded correctly and are, are appropriate for our policy. And I also wanted to thank Dr. King and her committees on the ongoing work with the homework policy. And you can see those, the work that's happening and next steps and things like that in our minutes. Attached to the board docs is the minutes from the March 3rd meeting and of course, next meeting, next board meeting, we'll be able to share the April minutes, but there, I know they're doing a lot of work as well as Dr. Taylor and her work in equity policy. So that's, those two are ongoing. Yes, policy committees, making sure that we, you know, have the correct wording in place and also action items. So thank you so much, and that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. We now move on to the Liaison Reports. Ms. Connor Halston, Eastern Center Arts and Technology Report.
Thank you. They're going over the same type of staffing issues that, that we are, enrollment shifts and then programming, the same things, and they are also working on them. They're also going through all their policies, shifting with students' rights to make sure that we are working on restorative over punitive. One thing they did bring to our attention, which we had a similar policy that did not go forward, as far as students making comments on social media. Apparently, that was done in another district and it was found to be against the child's civil liberties. So they are making sure they go through everything to make sure that we are not doing that also. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. Dr. Taylor, Federal Programs Report.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. On April 14th, we had a meeting with our non-public school partners. This is called a meaningful consultation meeting. And public school districts are required by federal law to compile a list of all students who receive free and reduced meals and live in the attendance area of the district's Title I schools. And this includes students who attend our non-public schools. And once we have that information, we meet with those non-public entities to make sure that we're providing equitable services to the students who attend those institutions. This year, we met with officials from the Horsom Quaker School, from Our Lady of Mercy, and Play and Learn. Title I Summer Academy is scheduled to take place June 28th through July 30th, Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM until noon. Our students who will be attending our face-to-face program will matriculate at Hollowell Elementary School. And we will also have a virtual option if needed. This year, we will provide lunch for our student participants. It will be provided at the end of the school day. And also, we will transport those children who need bus transportation provided by the district to our Summer Academy program. We are in the midst of hiring staff at this time. And Madam President, that ends my update.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Report. So the MCIU was proud to serve as a vaccination location during the month of March. And they administered over 10,000 vaccines in Montgomery County primarily to our school district employees across the county. We did have a vision support teacher at the MCIU that has been invited to become a member of the Pennsylvania Advisory Committee on Education of Students Who Are Blind or Visually Impaired. So the Montgomery County IU has a voice on that committee and that's a great honor that she was recognized to become a part of that committee. The IU supported Potts Grove recently in their search for a new superintendent and they appointed their new superintendent. And then they will next be supporting the Harrisburg School District in its search for a new superintendent as the next steps of the Harrisburg School District Recovery Plan. And that is all I have. The next Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Meeting is on April 28th at 6:45 PM. Ms. Brown, could you give us a HHEF report?
Yes. The Hepburn Horsom, thank you, Madam President. The Hepburn Horsom Educational Foundation invites you to lace up your sneakers and head outdoors for a weekend filled with fresh air and healthy steps to support extraordinary learning experiences for all Hepburn Horsom students. On May 15th and 16th, 2021, the HHEF, in conjunction with Horsom Township, the borough of Hepburn, will be hosting the HHEF Walk for Education Weekend, featuring two walking routes, one on the trails of Horsom Township and one on the store-filled sidewalks of Hepburn. The HHEF Walk for Education Weekend will allow participants to enjoy a walk with family, friends, or even solo, if you, if you like to walk alone at their own pace and on their own schedule. From 8:00 to 5:00 on both days and along both routes, participants can stroll along signage-filled pathways that will educate them about HHEF supported programs and our generous HHEF sponsors. Participants will always find selfie stations, if you're into making pictures of yourself, and photo op stops where they can snap a photo of themselves and post on Facebook to earn, to earn a chance to win fun prizes. From 10:00 to 2:00 each day and on both routes, there will be more fun components for walkers to experience and enjoy as well. There's no requirement fee to take a walk on our designated routes, but registrants will help to support innovative education opportunities for our Hepburn Horsom students. And donors will receive a cool event t-shirt and event bag. Registration is $20 for adults, $10 for 18 and under, and $55 for a family of four. Thank you. That is the end of my report.
And Ms. Brown, we have the PSBA report, which I-
Yes, I have kind of a limited report because I wasn't at one of the meetings, but I did would like to address three issues. One, which I think, this is an important issue. Thanks to the advocacy work, House passed a legislation to provide temporary grant of immunity from COVID-19 lawsuits. An amendment was successfully inserted into House Bill 605 to provide limited protection to schools from frivolous opportunist lawsuits alleging exposures to COVID-19 virus. Secondly, there are new recommendations from PDE, DE on school reopening, and I'm sure that our, the staff here is so wonderful about keeping up with things that are going on. I've been so impressed with them. They announced modifications to their instructional model recommendations from pre-K to 12 schools in response to updated guidance recently issued by the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. These updates became effective on Monday, April 12th. And the third thing I want to talk about, which I think is kind of interesting, PDE announces projects to provide broadband internet access through libraries. The Pennsylvania Department of Education, Office of Commonwealth Libraries, and the Keystone Initiative for Network-Based Education and Research recently announced the Libraries Connect Communities and Broadband Resource Projects, an initiative to provide access to broadband services in and beyond libraries across the Commonwealth's underserved and unserved communities. And I would like to refer it to the President in case I missed some things because she was at some of the meetings that I didn't attend.
I think the only other thing was, PSBA put out a new social media guide for school districts and school directors, which I sent out to everyone for your use. But I think that's, that's everything that, that you've covered.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Dr. Evanslog, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a brief report. Also want to echo what Ms. Brown had shared around the Education Foundation and encourage our participants, I mean, our, our community members to participate in the Walk for Education. I have been tremendously impressed with the foundation and their interest in supporting the district initiatives and supporting our students in many creative ways. So it's a great way for us to support the foundation and help them help us. So it's a great partnership with the foundation. I'd also like to thank our families as we have returned students to, to school. We have all been working under this ever-changing COVID landscape and evolving guidance. And one of the things that changed very recently, of course, is the eligibility for vaccination. With that, the district's been actively seeking a partnership to host a student COVID-19 vaccination clinic onsite. So we are hopeful that we will be able to do this as early as next week. Want to thank Representative Stevens, who's been helpful in working with us to, to try to provide this service for our students. We should be able to provide information for our families for vaccination opportunities for 16- to 18-year-olds. Very soon, within the next, within the next two days, provide some information. This is an example of things that are changing quickly, but opportunities have, have arisen for some partnerships that can provide a service. None of this, of course, would be required. It would be voluntary for student participants to be part of the vaccination program. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Evanslog. Now we move on to the second public comment section. This is for members of the community making, wishing to make a comment about anything. Please raise your hand if you wish to make a comment by using the raise hand function in Zoom or pressing star nine on your phone. When you get called on, you have three minutes to speak and we ask that you state your name and address prior to starting your comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to make a comment?
I do not see any hands raised at this time, Madam President.
Mr. Riker, you have some comments sent in via email.
Yes, Madam President, two, two virtual comments. The first from Carol and John Bruner, Earl Lane in Hepburn. Thank you to the school directors for volunteering your time and energy to help the Hepburn Horsom community to safely offer a high-quality education that all of our children can blossom and reach their full potential. Second, from a Nancy Temple, 21, Meeting House Road, Hepburn. Is critical race theory being taught anywhere in our school district? And that concludes the virtual comments.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. So that is the end of our meetings. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I, Teresa Brown, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Marion, second.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you. That concludes our meeting and have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, you too. Good night.
Night.
Night, thank you.